Hi, Mr. President, if you are ready.
Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Boards of Directors on March 8th, 2022. Would you call roll call, please?
Yes, Director Echols.
Here.
Director Arthur Perry.
Here.
Secretary Arlene Schaefer. Vice President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
President Robert Uten.
Here. Have we received any public comments for this?
No, Mr. President.
Study session, and I don't see anyone in the audience. So we'll go on down to receiving file, the 2022 code enforcement officers report. Scott, are you gonna do this?
Is David online right now? If he's not online, then I just am available to answer any questions if the board has any.
Hey, does the board have any questions?
Just a real quick question. And Scott, I'll just defer this to you, but every once in a while, I get to thinking about the alleyways over on the east side. And I haven't seen anything on David's report recently. Just if he could swing by there, just take a look. You remember that alleyway where? And it's not really scavenging. It was more parking carts and parking.
Cars in the alley.
Remember, the fire department had an issue with that. So, thank you.
Move to receiving file.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion, but the other, the other, Mike brings up an interesting comment. I think the city is trying to enforce or has a regulation to enforce those alleyway people to figure out how to get their carts out of the alleyways. Scott, do you know anything about that?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Well, you know, they had done that interestingly. They had, the city had gone down the alley off Royal Palm and made all those owners put in enclosures. But those are, those are multifamily.
Yep.
And they, I think they even overlap under our jurisdiction because there's some people on that alleyway that have individual carts, right? And they're, they're fine, except there are some vandalism and other issues. All of those people on the east side, they're all single family. There's, there's no multifamily with alleyway on the east side that I'm aware of. Maybe some duplexes.
Yeah, not many.
So it's kind of a different ballgame, I think.
Okay, we're going to item number two then. Receiving file, the waste composition study. Is Mike going?
Well, I'll do the intro, then I'll turn it over to Mike. So thank, thank you, Mr. President, Board Directors. So, to this day, Mike Baye performed a waste composition study to determine the amount of organic waste contaminations in our mixed waste collections routes. The, his report is attached to your staff report, but I did ask Mike to be here this morning to give you an oral overview of his, his study and his findings. And so we'll talk about that today. And then, as you know, this is going to be part of the requirements for SB 1383s is to determine the amount of contaminations in our neighborhoods. And as you'll see in this case, when we're finding a neighborhood or a route that has some contaminations, then what's our role? Our role next is to go out there and educate the public and what we found and what are the consequences if this continues after two years, right? I.e. fines could, could be possible. So I'm gonna turn this over to Mike, and he'll describe the procedures he followed on the study, and he'll describe his findings to, to the board, and then we'll open up for discussion. So, Mike, turn it over to you.
Hey, everybody. Good morning. I don't know if I can screen share, but I wanted to start with just a little bit about targeting and what we are trying to do with the eight different sorts per year. So I'm not sure if I can share, but in your.
I went ahead and gave you the rights to do so. Mike, go ahead and share your screen.
Okay. So first off, if you look at the routes, basically you have Monday through Friday, and I felt that the Thursday and Friday collections are fairly similar. So Wednesday, which is where our sort was, as well as Monday and Tuesday down at the bottom of the screen, those should have two sorts per year to, to collect different areas. There's different challenges being presented in those areas. So if you look to the very far right middle of the screen, that is the area that was sampled. So let me stop share. Go back and then, oh goodness, unfortunately, I don't have an easy way of seeing page one, but I think we are on page two, even though it said page one. So again, what we did in the, in the sort is we, we basically took a sampling of the route. We dump it on the ground, and then the state requires that we do basically representative sample, which would be, hopefully this is now the right one. There we go. So basically CRNR did the first part of their route, a little under a ton in their collection. There's the weight ticket, and we threw it down on the ground and spread it out into roughly a rectangle. We then set up cones to create grids and randomly took 11 samples from that area. And again, we're looking at identifying food waste, green waste, and the mixed trash and recyclables that was in that load. So let me flip to number two. I believe this is it. So we basically didn't find very much in the way of green waste. As you can see, these are typically single-family homes. I believe most, if not all of them, are employing landscapers. So it's not a huge surprise that there wasn't much green waste in the sample. It was only less than 2% by weight. So doing a good job keeping the green waste out of the mixed waste container. If you look here, the mixed waste was 75%. Not bad at all. There's a lot of beverage containers, paper and plastic, and historically CRNR is able to recover 52 to 57% of that material. So now let's go to the last one, and sorry if you're getting dizzy at home with the screen changes. But I am not the best in the world at this. Okay, so again, in ripping the bags open, we had to open them all up to see what was inside. And again, initially, we tried to identify and pull out all of the food waste because that is the behavior that needs to change. That now needs to go into the organics cart as close to 100% as possible. Again, the state's goal is to remove 75% of this material from landfills by 2025. So as you can see, about 22 and a half percent of what was in the mixed waste container was food waste. Not bad. I think this is typical, but again, we want to get that percentage down. So let me stop sharing, and I can address any questions. But again, the idea is to do two samples per quarter. This initial one was kind of a dry run that was done in the fourth quarter of 2021. We would like to do two sorts per quarter. So over the course of the year, those three areas that I mentioned that had some variety, we do two sorts for each, and then the Mesa Verde area and North Central Costa Mesa, that would have its own single sort per year.
Any of the directors have questions for Mike?
I have a question. First of all, congratulations on doing that report, Mike, without disturbing your dog. I think that's really, really nice on your part.
Yeah.
Talk about the mixed waste portion of it. You said 52 to 57% CRNR is able to recover and recycle or do whatever they.
Historically, that's been their, their, their studies and their results. It's been about 52 to 57%. Again, that has included some organics recovery. So by removing the organics completely, potentially going to a, again, what the state is really pushing for is, is three cart system. So you keep those recyclables as dry and contamination free as possible. Part of that is pushed by China, who is a major buyer of recyclables, and they keep getting more stringent standards on contamination of materials that they will buy, which has made mixed plastic and mixed paper markets suffer. So, again, sorry, go.
No, no, you, thank you. So the other percentage, the roughly other half of the mixed waste that they can't recover, I take it they're either, like you said, wet or contaminated, or in some way not, like, you know, people.
Not saleable. Yeah, not saleable. Really, everything is theoretically recyclable, but you have to have a buyer. So the drier the material is, the more value it has.
So there is a potential for somebody to recycle it. It's just based on the sellability that CRNR uses.
And the, and the cost to get it to market. For example, styrofoam is highly recyclable, but it's so lightweight, it's not economically feasible to send a truck, transfer a trailer truck with styrofoam. It's got, you know, 350 pounds in it.
Okay, that makes sense. The other thing, I guess, looking at that sampling of green waste in that picture, we're doing, the city, the residents are doing a, looks to me like a pretty good job of recycling or putting their green waste in the proper container. Do you, do you think that's true?
Well, I think the area that we went to is likely to be using landscapers, and they're removing that material off-site potentially. Again, that's kind of an unknown area. Cities really haven't regulated landscaper behavior, but typically they will take the material off-site rather than put it in the customer's container. And that appears to be the case in this sample area.
You know, I tell my guy, he doesn't take it away. He puts it in, I, I put my green cart out the day he's coming, and he knows to use my green cart. So as part of our educational system, as we move into 1383, and several of us have said this for a long time, we need to get some education to the gardeners. But more, we need to educate our public to tell their gardeners to use their green. I mean, going to the gardeners is going to be nearly impossible because we have no, it's not like the plumbers, when we had another program where we could identify plum. The gardeners are transient big time. So it's really an educational thing to our residents, right?
Yeah, again, the, the big thing is, hey, no more organics in the, the black cart, the trash or mixed waste, whichever it is going forward. It all has to go in the organics container. Again, I think the city code change, City of Costa Mesa and probably Newport Beach as well, instructs self-haul that they have to go to proper facilities because that's the other challenge. You want to make sure the landscapers aren't trying to go to the landfill with their material, that they're going to a site that'll create mulch or compost with it. So it's a good point and definitely a challenge, but for our purposes, this area is doing a very good job keeping green waste in the right container or potentially their landscapers are doing a good job either hauling it away or not, or putting it in the right container.
Thanks, Mike. I have a, Mike, I've got a couple of questions. You're working with the city. Did you do this characterization with the commercial?
No, we haven't. We're doing route audits as part of the new hauler franchise agreements that we put in place. They need to do the contamination study via route audits, and then facilities have certain requirements with the state, the local enforcement agency, if they're going for high diversion rate status. So with seven different haulers, everybody's a little bit different. But again, you're doing the lid flips with your hauler as well. This is a measure just to see overall how the routes are doing and target education to specific routes. Because again, once per year at minimum, you have to educate everyone on your program. So this is a, a way to do it in a targeted fashion.
Yeah, I have one other question, if I could. Back to the green waste with the garden, the landscapers. Where, do you know where they take that to, or who gets credit for that? Because the city is a landscaper that goes around the city, and where does that go? And did the city get credit for that, or can we get credit for that?
Well, theoretically, they are supposed to identify the jurisdiction of origin at the facility they go to. With the passage of SB 1383 and the state really getting into the minutia of the facilities and where this material goes, also coincidentally with Cal Recycles funding shifting from being a landfill surcharge to a total facility surcharge, including recycling locations, I think you'll see much more oversight on this type of reporting. But historically, there hasn't been a lot of focus on jurisdiction of origin at organics facilities, not to the level at landfill, but that's shifting.
But you think that'll change within two years?
Then the city. Well, they, they, they have to, because again, they have to identify. And again, this is where SB 1383 is a little tricky. There's no specific jurisdiction requirement in the law. It's overall, as a state, we have to reduce by 75%. If we don't, which we, we didn't meet the 50% goal in 2020. So if we don't meet the 75% goal by 2025, then potentially jurisdiction-specific requirements are in there. They're not right now, and I think that in part is because of having to transition oversight all these different recycling and composting facilities.
Thank you.
But that's just my opinion and my theory. It's not.
I just wanted to point out, I thought you only had one dog. There's three dogs in there.
Well, I have four.
It's okay, Mike.
My son's dog occasionally.
Two of my board members here.
Yes, yes. I'd like to speak a minute. Thank you. This is Women's Day, you know. So anyway, on the gardener's part, I wanted to speak on the gardener's part. I think we could have a meeting with the gardeners for the simple reason that I remember being on city council, and we called for a meeting. You're just saying you want to have some information delayed to them, or given to them, I should say. And there's two ways you can do it. We can either do it here with the gardeners, which they would come because they would wonder what the information was, you know, was going on. Or we could go jointly with the city and have it at the city area, and then we'd all have, we'd, it'd be a win-win because the city would get to say something on the gardeners, and we would too. So anyway, that's my suggestion, and I, I think it would work.
That's, that's kind of what I'm getting at in the future. You know, maybe we can have a local site where they take their green waste that we, the city can get credit for it to build up to the 75%, because if they just take it to the local dump, it just goes, the state is just gonna get the credit for it, I'm assuming. But I'm not sure what, you know, because Mike's not, it's, Mike said it's not in the parameters right now.
Well, Mike, when, when the, when the gardeners are prohibited from taking the landscape waste to the landfill, are there sufficient places for them to take it rather than putting it in the organic cans, the residential organic cans?
Yeah, well, to clarify, if they go to a facility like Tierra Verde, for example, they're tracking jurisdiction of origin. It's the smaller unlicensed sites potentially that the, the state is concerned about. That's why they want to make sure every site is permitted. If we're just dealing with green waste, it's, it's simpler. Again, by adding food waste, as you know, that's a much more complicated permit. There aren't enough of those facilities. But again, on, on the green waste side, the landscapers are, for the most part, taking it where they get their mulch. And so again, it's just a matter of making sure that that facility is tracking and reporting correctly, and, and that's part of the SB 1383 shift and the Cal Recycle focus shift. So again, I'm not aware of sites other than Tierra Verde or RNA soils, which is on the, the old base. There's not a, a lot of sites in Orange County, but, you know, based on capacity study for green waste, we're okay. It's the food waste and green waste that were, were not where we would like to be.
Yeah, I told my landscaper, you know, we have a lot of landscape, and he comes quarterly or whatever, and it's all different sizes and shapes. And he's, and so I told him about the provision in the future of not being able to take it to the landfill. And so he's, he's checked out the recycling costs, and he said those costs are skyrocketing. The, the recyclers are taking advantage. Or they're increasing the cost.
Yeah, see, unintended consequence. And again, I think the mandate that local jurisdictions have to buy the material, again, as opposed to create value to keep the tip fees in line, but there's, there's really nothing to, to control the fluctuations. People will charge what they can charge. If somebody has to go there, then you're right, the, the cost will likely go up.
When you mentioned the 52 to 57%, most of the jurisdictions that that data comes from probably were, already have three carts.
Well, no, the, the 52 to 57 were based on, previously I've done sorts of the, the diversion rate from your mixed waste carts. I didn't do a, such a study this time, but I mentioned the results of the historic studies in this report, just so you know. From looking at that mixed waste material, overall, 57% was recovered. Now, some of that was green waste. Previously, it wasn't all the recyclables. So again, the contamination factor by removing the food waste should up the ability to recover more dry recyclables. But again, it was just giving you a historical reference on, on what was recovered from that, that black cart historically.
Well, what would you expect to change if we implement the three-card system for the sanitary district?
Well, ideally, if participation is high and people put the right material in the right container, virtually all of the recycling and organics recycling will be recovered, and the black container would then just go directly to the landfill. Again, that's gonna be monitored, and that's the state's goal. I think they have a preference for the three-card. But the, the two-card, you know, is, is just, it's a bit more of a challenge because there are contaminants, your, your contaminants are going in there to varying extent. It's all about education at this point.
Any of the directors have any other questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Mr. President.
Alright, thanks everyone.
Pardon?
Mr. Mosher has his hand raised.
Okay, Jim, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, President Uten. Sorry, I was a little lazy and didn't show up in person, and also sorry. Zoom says it cannot find the camera on my laptop, so hopefully you can hear me. The question I have is Mr. Bailey's report ends with a comment that there's no need to do a characterization of the green carts because that material is sorted apparently before it goes to the digester, and we know that the contamination in it is only about 5%. My question is, from that sorting that takes place of the green cart, do we have any idea of how much food waste is going in that? So that we know what fraction of that stream is food waste, and by extension, how much food waste this route would be generating? So we know how much the pounds that he found here, is that a large or a small fraction of the food waste we would expect from this route? I hope the question is clear.
Yeah, well, I, I have done some audits and sorts of green cart material. That's food waste and green waste mix for various jurisdictions, and the food waste percentage by weight is typically 5% or less. So there's not a lot of food waste going in those containers. Now, again, CRNR is going to be doing their own facility studies on that material. Again, that's part of what they report to the district. How much was residual, which would be contamination, and how much was actually processed and recycled at their facility. Again, the state wants to know that as well, and so we can compare the data, but again, I don't have a clear picture on the green carts for this route, so I really can't comment how much this, this food waste would, would impact your, your ability to say, hey, we're recovering 75%. Based on historic audits that I've done, I put you at very close to that figure already, 72 to 75%. So I think you're getting a lot of the material, but again, the food waste piece really hasn't been studied closely. So you could be in the 60s, and you know, again, we want to try to educate and get as much of this material into the green cart. But again, the, the variables that we don't know is how much is going down the garbage disposal. So i- it's hard to say. I wish I could give you a better answer.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that, if I, if I might, Mike, I think Mr. Mosher's questions, it's a good question because as we think about what we do with our green cart, when it goes to the AD facility, as long as it's not contaminated with metals or other things, it all goes into those AD processors together. I mean, we don't need to distinguish really between green waste and food, but I, I think from a psych, or a study standpoint, knowing how much of that is food and how much is green is, is kind of an interesting concept. But ultimately, it all gets mixed together at the AD facility anyway, right?
It does. Now, again, based on the state's study, 18% of what's going in the landfill is supposedly food waste, but that is not all from residential routes. That's from commercial sources. So, you know, other than the studies I've done, which show it at less than 5% or 5% in the green carts, there's not a lot of data available. So again, we're, we're assuming CRNR's reports and characterizations individually of your jurisdiction will continue. But again, when they load the transfer trailer up and go out to Paris, you are mixed in with a lot of jurisdictions.
But all, all of that waste goes to Stanton, and is, it can be, if there's metals and things in there, it's sorted at that point. Or, or things are taken out of it at that point. Is that true?
And I think at, at Paris, they also have the ability to do some pre-sorting before it goes up on the line to, to remove contaminants.
Arlene?
Yeah, you know, when we had our buckets given to us, did, do we know how many people actually have those buckets? And, and I wonder if that helps. I know I, with my bucket, I even go, send away for the recycle part that goes into the bucket, the paper. So that I throw it, the vegetables or whatever into all that, and, you know, and I, no target has it for, that paper. If they, is needed. I don't know what you call that. But anyway, I just wondered, how much do we have left of the buckets here? Or have we given out all the buckets? And, and, you know, I wonder if having a campaign on that. And, and you know, I wonder if having a campaign on that would help for them to understand about the vegetables or the, all the branches and so forth.
Scott, would you like to answer that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question again?
But the question is, is do we have more pails? We always have a supply of pails.
Yes, yes, we have plenty of pails. In fact, former board member Dan Worthington has been asking for a dozen of those pails so he can give out to his neighbors. So we've been working with Dan Worthington on, on getting those pails out.
Did you give those to him yet?
I, I bought half of them. What he wants to do is put our, our logo on the pair, on the pail. So we're, we're, we had to order some more adhesive labels. And then we're going to print the label so he can put it on the pails and then give them to his friends.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm going to see him tomorrow. So if, if you had those.
He's relentless. He calls me every other day.
I told him, oh, you didn't know about buckets. I told him, hey, we've been doing this for a couple of years.
Yeah.
So I, I told him that you.
Well, he's, he's following, he's following through.
Dan has a bucket brigade going?
Oh, yes, he does. Yes, he does. He never slows down.
You know, even with the real estate people, they sell houses and they could give a bucket to them for, you know, starting out. I mean, there's ways that we could.
Yeah, well, you know, I've been a big proponent and, and I don't use the pails. I don't, I don't, well, I don't use the pails. I was going to say something more disparaging, but I use the little containers that I get from the deli and you know, the little cups. And I've been thinking about doing a video because there are people who won't use the pails. And they need alternatives to maybe put the organic materials in the refrigerator or not vegetable peelings, you don't have to put them in the refrigerator. But if I have spaghetti or something leftover, you know, I don't want to keep it for a week on my cupboard or whatever that the shelf is and put stuff on anyway.
They fit under sink, you know, the bucket is under there.
Yeah, so far I haven't chosen to do that.
My, my wife's already figured it out. She just doesn't cook. We go out and then they take care of it.
That's, that's what we do too. We go out every night.
Okay, well, there's a third alternative. And, and, and the other input from Mike?
That's great. That's good. When, when do you think you're coming back to us for the next report? Is that like six months or a year?
Well, now we, we need to get out to CRNR again. Two routes preferably tail end of this month. And so then every quarter we'll have basically two, two of these studies reported to you.
Okay. Well, Mike, you're also on the negotiating team with staff for CRNR. So that the contract changes, I think you and staff should be back pretty quickly with that. I think the goal is to get it done by sometime mid-year so that we have time to implement those changes. Because anyway.
Correct.
Any more questions for Mike or staff on this issue? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to the next item. Receiving file, the legislative report for quarter one. Is that you, Gina?
Yes, Gina, Tiara, I'll be giving this report.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, members of the board. And before you is our quarterly legislative report. This quarter, you may notice I've separated out the congressional and the state legislative reports into two separate documents, hopefully to make it a little bit easier to digest. So today I'm going to start with a brief overview of our congressional legislative report. Per the resolution approved by the board at your December board meeting, the district provided a letter of opposition against HR twenty-four sixty-seven, which seeks to limit the use of PFAS and establish EPA regulations for PFAS and drinking water. PFAS are a classification of toxic chemicals. And while local water and wastewater agencies agree that PFAS must be addressed in a proactive manner, there is concern that the bill will make water and wastewater agencies bear the liability for costly cleanup efforts. And these costs will inevitably impact ratepayers. So instead, local water agencies believe they should be exempt from this bill and that the cost burden should fall upon the industries that contaminate the water. And we are also watching other bills that seek to create wastewater infrastructure grants as well as grants to expand organic recycling and composting infrastructure. And we're also looking at a grant that seeks to reduce single-use plastics and another grant that will require that wipes products are properly labeled as non-flushable. And so moving on to our state legislative report, you'll find a list of notable bills that passed last year, which was the first year of our current legislative session. And these include AB three sixty-one, which allows local agencies to continue using teleconference means to conduct public meetings. And that's only while a state of emergency is declared. So this is the reason the board is adopting those monthly resolutions to authorize remote meetings. Another bill that passed was AB eight eighteen. This bill requires that wipes products are clearly labeled with the do not flush statement in order to reduce the amount of wipes that end up in our wastewater systems. We're also, we also saw AB twelve oh one pass. This also has to do with product labeling requirements. It prohibits companies from selling items that are labeled as compostable or biodegradable unless they meet a specific criteria. And that criteria is going to be set by Cal recycle. AB twelve seventy-six is similar to a legis, a law that passed about the use of plastic straws a few years ago. It's where food establishments can only give out single-use foodware like utensils and condiments upon the customer's request. So this is going to go into effect on June first of this year. And lastly, SB three twenty-three, this bill sets a one hundred and twenty-day statute of limitations on challenging newly adopted water and sewer fees. The district is also compiling a list of bills that we're watching and keeping track of. So these include AB nineteen forty-four. This bill would amend the Brown Act to allow members of a governing body to teleconference into public meetings without sharing the location from which they're joining. This is currently permitted under the emergency declaration for COVID nineteen, but it would not be allowed during normal, non-emergency circumstances. Another bill we're watching is AB nineteen ninety-three. This will likely be a contentious bill because it seeks to create a vaccine mandate for all private and public employees. There are noted exceptions for those with specified medical conditions and/or religious beliefs. SB fifty-four, this bill seeks to make manufacturers of single-use plastic packaging and food service products responsible for making sure these products are either reusable, recyclable, or compostable by the year twenty thirty-two. And lastly, SB eleven hundred, this bill came in response to many instances of disorderly conduct at local agency meetings nationwide. It seeks to establish the agency's right to remove disruptive individuals from public meetings under specified circumstances, including engaging in a physical altercation or using offensive language that might provoke violence.
We're just watching that one right now.
The, the whole section of bills we're just watching right now. So that concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Mr. President. Yeah, Gene, just quick on, I've got way too many personal opinions, but we'll keep it what we're dealing with. But are, is there anything coming up on our watch list or anything like that that you foresee we need to take a position on in the next, say, quarter or whatnot?
There may be. Right now, according to our policy, we, we generally don't take positions unless agencies that we're a part of, like CSDA or OCSD already take a position. So that's kind of what I watch for when I'm putting the report together. So far, they're also just watching all of these bills. So we're kind of hanging back to see what happens.
Got it. So, okay, thank you.
Do any directors have questions?
What's that? Go ahead, Mike. Oh, just Gina, on the, the federal bills, thirty-six eighty-four and twenty-four sixty-seven, which was the one that would impose cleanup? You said would make agencies pay for cleanup?
Yes, that's twenty-four sixty-seven.
Okay, that could have a big impact on SDRMA, for example. We know, we don't, sorry, sorry for saying we, SDRMA doesn't cover cleanups. We know that. We had, remember Scott with, with our Labor Day one? So there is a huge impact on JPAs and other coverage providers. Okay, the other question I had was on, on a statewide AB eighteen seventy-two, proposing that election day be a holiday?
Yeah.
Why not? Except, you know, a lot of countries vote on Sunday when people aren't working anyway. So I didn't see any mention of going to a weekend voting system. And in our country, it looks like mail-in voting is the way it's going anyway. So that's going to be, that's going to be a tough one. And the other one, just real quick, SB three twenty-three. I missed it. Help me on that.
That's the statute of limitations for sewer water charges.
Oh, yeah, it said, it said in the language that we establish or you're, by, by regulation, we establish connection fees and all those other things based on what's reasonable, right, Scott? Is that based on the local reasonable or? It, it, it's seen pretty wide open in terms of, I mean, it's, it's going to cost you more to hook up a sewer in Orange County than it is in Siskiyou County, for example.
Well, that's the worst word to put in any law is reasonable. Because how do you define reasonable? Everyone has a different interpretation.
That's my point.
So it's the worst word to use in a law.
Have, have we ever been challenged by anybody on a connection fee? Okay, that, I think that kind of answers my question. Thanks, Bob.
Do any of the other directors have questions? I have a comment on the PFAS action. Do you know what Orange County Sand District's position on that is? I, I think they're the agency that's going to be required to remove PFAS from their effluent. And currently with the groundwater replenishment system, PFAS chemicals are strained out of the system by the, and then recycled back through Orange County. So I, I, I've heard some discussion there that they're studying where PFAS comes from. And it had basically is a lot of cities, it's in the water supply. And some of them where the regulatory limit is too high, you know, they're having to install expensive removal equipment. And my suspicion is that it'll be removed and then it'll be put back in the sewer headed towards Orange County sand. It, it's pure craziness. I'm sure Orange County Sand Districts, by having the groundwater replenishment system, has doubled their PFAS discharge as it's measured because there's so much less water going out the output. Anyway, it just, it just, it needs to have the correct attention. I don't know if the regulators have any clue what really needs to be done. But, and there's a lot of opportunities. Anyway, what, what is the, I, well, I, I've got to read the one on the registry. So let's go on to the, unless any directors have any more questions, let's go on to the next item, which is discuss the SSMP, new SSMP regulations.
Thank you, Mr. President. So for the past sixteen years, public agencies who own and operate at least one mile of sanitary sewer system must comply with the State Water Board Waste Discharge Requirement General Order. It describes how public agencies must manage their sewer systems to reduce SSO sewer sanitary overflows. It's really the reason why we have a sewer system management plan is because of, of the order that was adopted by the, the state back in two thousand and six. Because this, this order is now sixteen years old, state, the state believes it's time to reissue a revised general order that includes some significant changes from two thousand and six order. And those changes are described in your staff report, which I'll briefly go over right now. And we can have a discussion when I'm done. So the first significant change in the proposed order is really restating the prohibition statement. The basis of removing the existing statement replacing with a statement that says, "Any discharge from a sanitary sewer system that has the potential to discharge to waters of the state is prohibited unless it is promptly cleaned up and reported as acquired in the order." And the question that everyone's been asking at these workshops is, well, what does, what does potential mean? How do you define potential? Well, not, it's, in my opinion, I think it's pretty easy to, to define it. The way I, I interpret potential meaning is that any part of the sewer system can fail if the system is not properly maintained, right? And that's where the goal is, the goal of this order is, is to, is to strongly encourage these agencies to do a good job maintaining your sewer system. The second change is actually a new requirement in the order, and that's the system performance analysis. This will require our staff to submit in, in CWIX, which is an electronic reporting system that stands for the California Integrated Water Quality System. We need to submit a ten-year performance analysis that includes the total number of spills, the total number of spills per hundred miles of our sewer system and a total spill volume each calendar year. If you can open the attachment. The good news about this new requirement is that the district has had a good history of documenting and tracking our historical sewer spills. And so we were able to produce this performance analysis quite easily. It's, which is attached in your staff report. We're going to pull it up here on the screen and show what it looks, what it looks like, what our performance analysis in the past ten years. It's under attachments. No, 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 go down, go to the staff report. There we go, scroll down. So here's our ten performance, ten years' performance analysis. The, the column on the left is the total volumes of the spill. And then the column on the right is the number of spills and the number of spills per hundred miles of our system per calendar year. Yes, okay. So that's what it looks like. So again, it's already done. So when the order is adopted, we would just upload this on, on CWIX. So the work's done. So, but this is again, a new requirement. The third proposed revision is, is actually one that most agents support. And that is extending the timeline to audit our sewer system management plan and revising the plan. Right now, we have to audit our plan every two years. The proposed order is now suggesting we can do it every three years. And the same for updating our plan. Right now, it's up once every five years. Once the order is adopted, it'll be once every six years. So the, the orders is on schedule to be adopted later in two thousand and twenty-two, which means our audit will not be, not have to be, we don't have to audit our SFP till two thousand and twenty-three because we were originally going to audit this year, two thousand and twenty-two. But according to the state officials, if you already adopted it a couple of years back, you can extend that for another year or two. And then updating our, our SFP, which is updated in two thousand and twenty-one. So the next time it'd be, it'd be, need to be updated, be, be two thousand and twenty-seven. The fourth significant change in the order is voluntarily reporting private sewer spills. This, this is a brand new requirement. And this was a bit of a concern from a lot of the agencies. And I think that's why they're, they're, it's encouraging, it's voluntarily, it's not required. I think at the one time they were considering making a mandate that we would have to report private spills. But I think that a lot of the agencies got to state officials saying, you're going to take off, you're going to take on a lot of responsibilities. I think that the agencies were made aware to the state officials that if you're going to take on this responsibility, you better have some more staff because it's just going to be too much of a burdensome. For example, in, in our district, we, we receive about a half a dozen private spills a year. Of those, we report probably half of those. And that's because those spills probably got into the, got into the storm drain or got in the streets. So we go out there and clean it up. We don't go on the private property, but we go on the street and clean, clean up the spills. And then we bill the private property owners for that. So this is a voluntary requirement. So anything that's a thousand gallons, they want us to voluntarily report it on CWIX. If a thousand gallons reach surface waters, then they want us to report, voluntarily report it to CALOS, their emergency operations center. So, so again, we historically used to track private spills, but then we stopped a few years ago because it wasn't required. So maybe we need to start doing that again. But that's, that's a new requirement. And then they also had a new requirement of, of the annual report has a, has a deadline date to submit. Currently, we have to update our, any updates in our sewer sanitary system, we have to report that in CWIX within a twelve-month period. There's no specific timelines, long as we do it within a twelve-month period, that's fine. There's no specific timeline as long as we do within a twelve-month period, that's fine. Well, this new proposed order is saying there is now a deadline, and they're saying of April first of each year, you have to submit those those updates. So the order is adopted later this year, that that requirement will come effective on April first of two thousand and twenty-three. And then the six revised requirements in the order is creating, revising sewer category, how they how they identify sewer spills. This category, they have, right now, we have three categories. Category one and two remain the same. Category three is revised a little bit to be more specifics. So a category three spill is identified as a spill between fifty to a thousand gallons that did not reach surface waters or drainage channels or stormwater systems. And then category four is a new category that they want us to report, and that's any spills of less than fifty gallons that did not reach surface water. So that's new. And then knowingly that the state knows that most likely a lot of agencies were reporting a lot of category four spills, there is an incentive to reduce those reportings. However, that incentive, the bar is is quite high to achieve. And to reduce your category spill reporting, you have to have no more than two spills per hundred miles per year for the last five consecutive years. In addition, a total volume of individual spills do not exceed a thousand gallons, and spills do not discharge in the water of the U.S. So that's kind of a high bar to achieve. And then the second requirement is that you have to at least fifty percent of the agency's operation maintenance workforce certified in the collections and maintenance from CWA. That we have already achieved, that's not a problem for us. It's the first requirement that's gonna be, I think, very difficult for a lot of the agencies to achieve. But there is incentives. The eighth, there's an eighth significant revisions to the proposed order, and that is professional licensing and certifications. So right now, every agency has to sign what's called a legally responsible official, and that's the person who's responsible for going to CWIX and reporting sewer spills or updating the sewer sewer system management plan. It used to be Rob Hamers was at LRO, but after his passing, I've been taking on the responsibilities. And at first, they were gonna require a licensed certified engineer be required to be the LRO, but they they backed off on that and said, no, you don't have to. So someone like myself can still be the LRO. However, when you're updating your SSMP, it does have to be stamped and signed by a licensed certified engineer or a certified grade-two collection system maintenance operator, which we have both. So when we update our next plan in two thousand and twenty-seven, Mark will have to put a stamp on there and sign it. So again, not a big, not a big deal, but that's, that's a new requirement. Then the other new revision is is submitting on CWIX our electronic service area boundary map. It's within twelve months of the effective date of the reissuance of the general order, agencies must submit to CWIX an up-to-date electronic spatial map of the agency sewer system service area boundaries. And again, we already have that, so it's not an issue, so we can usually upload that on CWIX. And then the the next significant change is the one I have the most concern about. And if anything, if we want to write a written, written protest or written concerns to to the state, which is due by April eighth, this is the one area I do believe we should do. And that is the water quality sampling analysis. So the current order requires agencies to conduct water quality samples within forty-eight hours after initial notifications of a category-one SSOs, which is anything larger than fifty thousand gallons. We have forty-eight hours to go out and and do water quality sampling. The proposed order is revising that to go twelve hours. What what makes that challenging is that what happens if we have a spill on, you know, ten o'clock at night on a Saturday? Our lab's gonna be open on a Sunday? I don't know yet. It's probably not. And so therefore, a lot of agencies won't be able to comply with that, 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 that requirement. So maybe, you know, we suggest twenty-four hours, that might be more of a compromise. But a lot of agencies had expressed concerns about that, and the state's response was, we don't care, deal with it. That was basically their response. So I I think that's the one issue that that I think has the most potential issues with us. We do have all the water sampling equipments to do the, to collect the water. We just don't have a lab assigned that can do those analyses. That's, that's what we'd have to find out. Now, lastly, is the sewer pipe blockage control program, which used to be under the fog program, the fast oil and grease program, but they expanded that not to only include fog, but also include roots, rags, and debris. And they want agencies to develop a plan that identifies documents and dress system air components prone to root intrusions, potentially resulting in systems backup, which we already do right now. So again, that's not a, not a big issue. Many of these proposed changes, as I mentioned in the staff report, I don't foresee it to be a significant adherence to to the district because we're already doing it. The only issue is the water sampling that I have concerns with. Other than that, everything else is is doable. We can, we can do it because we're already doing it. So. So that concludes my my presentations and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, I had a question. What if you don't meet one of these requirements?
Then they can potentially fine you, I believe. But first off, they'll send several warning letters to you. But obviously, the, the, what will happen is that if there's a spill, and it's a significant spill, then they're gonna go through their order and say, are you complying with everything? And everything they find you're not complying, they're just gonna add on to their their administrative fine. So they're not gonna come out, I mean, they do do audits of the agencies, and they will give like warnings, but really what what will catch agencies and get them in trouble is that once they have a large spill, then it's just gonna open up a Pandora's box. They're gonna look at everything in your, that you document.
Okay, and the other thing is, could we write a protest letter on what you just said about?
Sure, yeah, I wouldn't, yeah, we could call it protest letter or just concerns, you know, something like that. Yes, we could definitely write that. It's, do we have to submit our written, written response or written comments by by April eighth?
So can we say something today on it, or do we have to wait till?
No, you could direct, if you want me to do it, just direct, direct the general manager to write something.
You've directed him to do it.
Is everybody in agreement though? You're okay? Okay.
I got a question for Bob. Does Orange County Sand District, are they open on the weekends for labs?
They open and they sample every day.
Okay, I'm just saying that could be a possibility.
We have used OCSD in the past, remember for that one, when we were being challenged by that NGO on water stuff. So we went and asked, and they graciously allowed us to sample. But I think we can reach out to them again, but I believe their concern is that if they open the door for us, then they're gonna open the door for all the other agencies, and that might burden their staff. So, but it can't hurt to ask.
That's just a backup plan.
Yes.
They don't accept it.
Right.
That would, that would.
Generally, Scott, I don't think, I I think they should open it up for all the other agencies, and I think they they probably would. Generally, an agency only, it's only one agency that has a spill. Not not twenty-five agencies at the same time. But when I, I was, I was, my staff was the originator of the local WDRs that went into effect in two thousand and two. And what we did was we recognized that many, many of the areas would be part of language to many of the twenty-five member agencies at the Orange County Sand District. So what we did was we wrote white papers for how to achieve compliance. And so what I think, if you're going to write opposition to, what is it, number, the water quality analysis, then I think you ought to ask the state to write a white paper for how agencies should achieve that requirement. You know, when we, when we were writing the original things, it was actually Rob Hamers, our district engineer, that wrote the outline of the SSMP. And so what we did was we hired EEC, which is one of our contractors now, to write a white paper on how the agencies, how the cities would achieve compliance with with the fog-related issues. And Nick Arondes was based, you know, I'm taking major credit for this, but I don't want any death threats from the local agencies. Anyway, I would ask them, you know, to hire, hire someone to figure out how the various agencies, our agencies probably lucky in that Orange County Sand District will probably fulfill that obligation for us. There are many agencies and cities that are remote and don't have the the capability, although, well, yeah, I believe that's true, don't have the capability to achieve this requirement. So I would hope that somehow the, you could put this on the state to write a white paper for how various agencies can achieve this.
Yes, I I took note of that. That's a good suggestion. Thank you. We will definitely put that in the letter. But also a a great help from the elected officials on OCSD's board to support OCSD, helping the jurisdiction with with the sampling would also benefit.
I'm sure every, every director there, the twenty-five directors, would be in tune with that. And basically, I'll, I'll talk to Herbert about it, the general manager over there.
That'd be very helpful. Thank you.
And and are you the, are you the main one that was in this meeting?
Yes.
The other person, the other contact that that follows closely with Orange County Sand District is Dindo, is marketed Dindo Correo. So, so, you know, that's his job over there is to figure out how, you know, to meet the waste discharge requirements. So if you need a resource, one, I'd talk to Herbert, two, you'd talk to Dido Correo and and then see if you can't get the state help people, agencies figure out how to do this.
Thank you.
Quick question. Several times during, in all this, they mention waters of the U.S., and then they say surface waters. Is there a distinction between the two, or or is waters of the U.S. the all-encompassing term for all, you know?
Surface waters could be lakes.
Yeah, but it's still a water of the U.S., right?
I don't know.
If you, you know what I'm talking about, Mark?
Yeah, I I've seen the same thing. I'm not sure there is a difference, but we can certainly get back to you on that one.
Don't make it, you mean, if you come across, I mean, to me, waters of the U.S. means any kind of server, any kind of lake, river stream puddle. I mean, so just if you see something, that's fine.
Any other questions on this?
I think we're on top of it. Pretty good.
No, I think, I, I think we can find ways to comply with that, but.
Mr. Moser has his hand raised.
Oh, Mr. Moser, please.
Yeah, thank you, President. This may be a small point, but on the very first change, the one, number one prohibitions, which is the one that has the reference to the United States waters in it, I I read that a little differently than Scott does. It contains the word potential. He thought the word potential is modifying sanitary sewer systems and somehow is about sewer systems that have a potential to fail. I think the word potential is modifying discharge. And it's trying to say that a discharge, an overflow, that has a potential to reach the waters is prohibited. And so I I read the, and then the question would be what the word prohibited means. I think it means that if the district does not promptly clean up a discharge that has a potential to reach the waters, even if it does not, can be fined for that because it's doing something that is prohibited. So and apparently if the discharge did not have any potential of reaching the waters, whether you clean it up rapidly or quickly is not a big concern to them. But if it has the potential to reach the waters, it is. So anyway, I I read that a little differently than Scott was reading it. Thank you.
Any, any other comments on this item? Thank you, Jim. If not, we'll go to closing items, oral communications and directors' comments. Do any of the directors have any items?
I do, but I'm gonna, since it's Women's Day, I'm gonna defer to the secretary.
Did you have a comment? Oh, she didn't have a comment.
I just.
Don't make that assumption.
That was.
I looked at her and she would not.
That's very nice. Thank you.
I just.
I just want to be sure everybody's got their seven hundred form in.
Yeah. It's due when? The end of this month?
Yeah, it's the end of this month. It's due, so.
So I do have a comment.
Thank you.
Director Schaefer, would you make your comment?
Yes, sir, I will. Scott, every, last week's weekly report, you talked about the CRNR negotiations, and you think it's gonna get wrapped up. Is it possible for you to, when's your next meeting with?
Next week?
Next week? Maybe short notice, but is there a chance that you can get to us kind of some bullet points or kind of a summary of what what the points are and where you are and the, like?
I didn't want to do it right now because it's a public document. I didn't want to do it. I didn't want to disclose our, our discussion point publicly at this point until we're in agreements, yes.
Okay, I guess my concern is are there some major sticking points or is there some issues?
It's something that I don't believe it's anything we can't work through.
Okay. It's kind of like the baseball negotiations. I want to make sure that, you know. So, so you're comfortable with what they're asking for?
Yeah, if if we come to an impasse, then we'll come to the board in in direction. So that's usually what we we've done in the past.
Okay.
Have you ever considered having a board member on that committee?
No.
Because Newport Beach did. They had two board members. And I, it might be s- smart to have one of the board members like Mike be in attendance at those meetings because of the past information that he has acquired. I think, I think that would be a great idea.
It's up to the board if you want to do that.
You know, I'll defer that if you think there's a need, I guess. Maybe we can talk about that.
Is it, well, just if you, I'll have to agendaize this on on the March twenty-eighth study session, or March twentieth board meeting, if you want.
I would like you to do that, just to, for the board to consider, because we haven't, we haven't talked about it, but I think it would be a good idea just to make sure we're expediting it, because we like to do it as soon as possible with the new, new program going. I mean, that's just where I'm coming from. I, Bob, is that okay with you? Because you have to approve the agenda.
Yeah, we didn't have an agenda.
No, this is, no, this is just oral comments. It would come up for the board meeting. Is that okay with you that we put that on there?
Sure.
Okay, because everything has to be approved by the president.
Okay, any other oral directors' communications or comments? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.